We're calling it April 3rd, workshop in the city of Dunellen. It's 5:30. Could we all stand for the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have anyone in the audience who would like to offer a prayer? If not, you can just take a moment and sit and just think. Amen. Couple things. I want to remind everybody, please, to find your cell phones. Meeting's going on, that would be great. Also, I want to point out two exits. One is behind you, and one is on that side over there, in case there's an emergency, you will know how to get out of here. All right, Mandy.
Okay. Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Councilperson Mendocca.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Meninsky.
Here.
Councilwoman Kovach. Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant City Clerk, she's here. Julie Donowski, Records Clerk.
Here.
Matt Pogelo, Public Works.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawks.
Here.
Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, the city hall bulletin board, on Monday, March 27th, 2023, and amended on March 28th to add backup to Agenda Item Number 3.
Okay, now we'll have public comments. I want to remind everybody to address your public comments to the chair. And also, please limit your public comments to three minutes or less. That way, we can stay on time and get the agenda handled correctly. Thank you. Mandy, we have any of us sign up?
Yes, sir. Bob Bardo.
I'm Bob Bardo. I live at 5235 Northwest 21st Loop, Ocala. I'm a member of the Ocala 200 Lions Club. Over 100 years ago, Lions Club was formed as a major service project for the world. And today, there are 48,000 Lions Clubs in over 200 countries in the world. Over 50 years ago, there was a Lions Club formed in Dunellen. They've served here for 50 years. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, it ceased to exist. It diminished in size. We are back to restart the Lions Club in Dunellen. The service that the club previous 50 years provided, those services are still needed. Whether it be sight, childhood cancer, environmental, and so forth. And our purpose is to let the community know that we are back in town. We are soliciting individuals to join the Lions Club. We need 20 members to start a new Lions Club. We're right now at 14, and still climbing. And my purpose tonight was to make everyone totally aware that this is what we'll be doing in our town, because the need is there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Council.
All right.
I come here tonight to give you my exit plan, and also the exit plan for the Dunellen Police Department.
Okay.
All of the officers at the Dunellen Police Department are resigning. And the sheriff has gone to say he's taking over. And he's asked for a couple of things in return. The sheriff has asked that he will continue to have eight officers in Dunellen at all times. But he wishes that all the cars and all the weapons be turned over to him. And that way, it'd be no cost to the city council that he go have the eight people here full-time. The same officers will be here. And that is his request. And also, to have the building at a... With a reasonable rent to the building.
Sure.
So it's going to take, if y'all decide that's what you want to do, is for them to take over. Of course, not much choice left there, because they've all decided to go over to the sheriff. I would be the liaison person for 30, 60, 90 days until it has been completely taken over by the sheriff. The officers have been going through his programs, uniforms, the whole nine yards.
Sure, sure. Can I interrupt you for a second?
Most certainly. I only got another minute.
First of all, I appreciate all you've done for our city. My... I really do. I'm going to be kind of out tomorrow. But I want to get to you and anyone else that's here, and probably Billy Woods, and let's talk through this to make sure we're all understand what's going to happen.
He will be here the 12th.
The 12th, okay. That'll work. The next question is...
I do have an appointment with you on Wednesday, if you would like to.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. You and I have an appointment already.
Yes, sir.
And we can...
You may have time.
Okay. Let me get through the procedure I got going tomorrow, and I'll know how I'm feeling on Halloween. I want to get up. But yeah, we definitely need to have that meeting. The next question, you're going to stay on 30, 60, 90 days. What about the officers?
Well, there'd be a transition.
Okay.
Because they got to go through an orientation, they got to change uniforms.
Sure.
So, but the sheriff wants to do all of it once. In other words, it'd be... For the officers, it'd be all at the same time. But we've got evidence to transition.
Sure.
We have officers who need to pay to transition.
Sure.
Time. There's a lot to do.
There's a lot going on here.
There's a lot going on, yes, sir.
Right. That's what's been bothering me ever since I heard this this morning, is how we transition it. So, okay, great. He'll be here the 12th, you and I can meet on Wednesday and get...
You just let me know what time I'm staying when you feel good.
I'll either let you know tomorrow afternoon or first thing Wednesday morning, when we get there. Okay.
That's it. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm sure the public might want to know about this. How does this work with our appropriated budget? Are we going to have to have a conversation with Billy Woods about how his program's going to be paid for? There's going to be extra expenses? The one I thought about is the changing of our patrol cars to...
No.
Placing, or how's that going to work?
Probably what will happen, I know it's already in motion with the county, for them to do an ordinance, or them to... For the sheriff to come here, like with the fire department. So he will probably go with an MSTU-type budget, which will be an additional tax to the taxpayers. However, y'all have the choice of reducing your taxes, so it doesn't cost anything to the taxpayers, or them, or the sheriff, to come here. And like I said, if everything goes well, and he gets his cars, which is a big item to him.
Sure.
Then he won't need to have any more money from the city.
Right. Yeah, that's what I really... We need to get down to the nuts of both of this whole thing.
Yes, sir.
And clearly, you know, understanding, not only, like you say, that when the fire department left, it's an assessment to everyone's... Your property taxes, but it came out of your property taxes.
Yes, sir.
So that's probably how this would work, would be my guess. But again, I want to understand how that works. Also, understand the remainder of this year through September 30th, how do we handle that? We'll have to sit down with Mr. Woods and figure this out.
Yes, sir.
See you Wednesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Lynn McAndrew. My name is Lynn McAndrew. I live at 2039 O'Grady, Dunellen, Florida. And I wanted to know why we have a city government, because we're not going to have a police department or a fire department. I pay taxes for two reasons. One is for protection, and the other is for infrastructure. You don't provide cars anymore, and the road conditions are hard. If you dissolve our police department, the city of Dunellen no longer has a job. And so, if you're getting rid of the police department, you should file the... The paperwork should dissolve the city charter. Why am I paying $5,500 a year if I don't have... If I'm not paying you for fire protection and police protection? I don't understand that. And then, now I'm here, and I'm going to be paying not only $300 to the police... To the fire department, to the county for the fire department, but I'm probably going to be paying another $300 a year for the police department. You need to think long and hard about what you're doing here, because once it's gone, you'll never get it back. And as I see it, the only people that I see who actually do anything for the city is right there. This guy who works for Public Works. Everybody else, what do they do? They don't collect water bills, they don't... We don't have a... It's just nothing... You know, it's just a government functionary position that other people hold. The actual work that gets done in the city is being farmed out now to the county. So maybe they should take over Public Works, too. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Kathy Dunn. Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrix Drive. I would like to urge the city council to table the request for use of CRA funds for construction of a shelter at Blue Rain Park. The city of Dunellen lacks the resources to construct additional amenities at the park. Marion County's Board of Tourism collects 100% of the monies from the hotel tables. The money we collect from the gas tanks is very small, because it's calculated on the basis of population. We only have 2,000 people. Rainbow Springs and Rio Vista have a population of over 4,000 people. If these neighborhoods would consider annexation by the city of Dunellen, we could fund many more amenities and projects. We might even be able to pay our city roads like the one that exists in these communities. It has been said that Dunellen should demonstrate that they are good partners with Marion County. I'm sure that Marion County officials realize the situation that exists here in Dunellen because of lack of incomes. We are at the precipice of losing the ability to fund a city at all. CRA money was intended to address violence. We have not used the funds for this purpose, but for feel-good pet projects that have not even begun to eliminate violence. It is essential that we revamp our CRA plan that is now out of compliance. We are in danger of losing this beneficial monetary resource if we do not update our plan. This will occur in outside resource that will cost money. We need a plan now, as well as for the future elected officials, that ensure that our CRA money will be used according to a strategic and thoughtful plan and manner. This is needed to address existing issues in Dunellen that are encouraging folks to move to and live in neighborhoods without violence, such as Rainbow Springs, Rainbow Lakes Estates, Citrus Springs, and Rio Vista. Why would potential homeowners buy properties and live in a town that allows commercial businesses to exist in residential areas, have dirt roads, and neighbors with rusty cars in the front yard? The property values reflect how nonexistent and poor planning have devolved in Dunellen properties. Small-town America is disappearing. The current city council ran on a platform focused on correcting some of the issues I have described. We have little time, even less money, to spend on revitalizing the city of Dunellen. We cannot afford the time or the money to construct amenities for tourists at this time. Let's maintain a laser vision that will make Dunellen a place that people will want to move to and live in. Time is running out. We have a gem of a city, and I think the future is ahead of us for people to live here and work here. Thank you. Anthony Chase.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anthony Chase. I live at 1318 Zil Southwest over in Roller Ranch Estates. And my purpose to come in today is to be a helper handler to the city. My background is military and sports. I've been to two Olympics. I have two sons in military, one in the academy, they were OCS, School of War. And I put them in there for a strategic training that I put together from the military and being in two Olympics. So I figured, well, I could go back, come back to the community and help the kids out as well. This would be strictly volunteer. It's just giving back to the community. Because if anybody needs, you know, any kids that need some help, I can mentor them, tutor them, get them on the right path. I know I can do it, because I've done it before. And this is what I'm supposed to do. So my number's 352-299-6286. And I'll be here for you soon, hopefully. Yes.
Good number. So fast I couldn't...
Oh, I'm sorry. 352-299-6286.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else signed up, and I don't have anyone on Zoom?
Okay. Before we go on, I want to make a statement. I found about this departure of the chief about 10:30 this morning. Yeah, there's a lot of things this city's got to figure out in the next few days, few weeks, few months. Do we want a police department? If we do, we're going to have to start all over again. If we don't, is there a need for the city? There's a lot of things that are going to have to be discussed. And I appreciate any input on that, and I'm sure the whole council does. Because again, I've had less than 12 hours to figure all this out, and to be honest with you, I haven't figured anything out. But I do think we're going to have to have a few meetings. And hopefully, Chief and I can get together Wednesday, then with the sheriff on the 12th. I also would like to, if we can work it out on everybody's schedule, to have a workshop later this month to address this whole issue of the police department, if the rest of the council could possibly look that out. I know we're all busy, but this, to me, is absolutely critical. It needs to be started this month. We can't wait to figure out what to do next, okay? But that's all I want to say to everybody. This was absolutely a shock to me. Not only the chief, but then the rest of the police department as well. So we just got to roll up our sleeves and figure out where we'll go from here and how to handle this. Appreciate everybody's patience, and any input you have, please. You can write me a wonderful email, and I'm sure I'm... Okay.
You'll probably be taking one of your files. Thank you.
All right. Now, let's get back to the agenda. Let's see. Board reports. Three board reports.
Raina Diago, 11661 Camp 5, Dunellen, for the Planning Commission. Nothing to report this month of any substance. But one bright note is the city did make a purchase, the training program for the Planning Commission members. And I think I myself, and maybe Lisa Sheffield, who's still serving, are the only members who have had any training, and that was years ago for a one-day workshop in Gainesville. So I really appreciate that, the city doing that. It's much needed. And on a personal note, Mr. Mayor, I'm so glad that you made the statement you did, because I'm still in shock. I had not heard any discussion, and the only meetings I've been attending was the decision on how to fund the new police department. So I do remember a year or so ago when Sheriff Woods was here, and when there was some discussion, do we need a police department? And he was very clear about the need for a police department, and that the sheriff's department, if they could step in and take over, there would not be a cost savings to the city. So hopefully, he still feels the same. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other board reports to have? Okay. All right. The Dunellen Chamber and Business Association report.
Hello. My name is Judy Twoliger. I'm the executive director of the Dunellen Chamber. We have a few new members. We have Faith Family Camp and Cheers at Rainbow Springs. We have some upcoming events. April 4th, tomorrow, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Sketch the World at Rainbow Springs Art Co-op, and the fee is $125. April 5th, from 4:00 to 6:00, is Pour a Crashing Wave, Acrylic Pour Class at Rainbow Springs, and the cost is $55. April 6th, Rock Painting at Rainbow Springs Art Co-op, $40. And I missed it on here, but April 7th is our next business after hours at Mirabella Salon and Spa on Chestnut Street in Dunellen. It starts at 6:00 p.m. April 12th is the Watercolor Wednesday at Rainbow Springs Art Co-op, and that's $40. April 14th, we're bringing back the Boomtown Pickoff Breakfast at the American Legion, starting at 7:00 a.m. The doors will open at 6:30. The cost is $7 per person, and all the proceeds go towards bringing the Vietnam Traveling Wall to Dunellen in September of 2023. April 15th, of course, is Boomtown Days from 9:00 to 5:00 in the Historic District. And then the car show is from 9:00 to 1:00, and then the pie eating contest is at 1:00. April 19th, we have a Rib Basket Making at Rainbow Springs Art from 11:30 to 3:30, and the cost for that is $50. April 22nd is Reggae in the Gardens at Cedar Woods, Cedar Lakes Woods and Gardens, from 9:30 to 5:00. The admission is $12 for adults, children 6 to 13 or $7, and children under 5 are free. And then April 26th, we have a Cruise-In Car Show at the Front Porch Restaurant, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Bring your classic car and get a free slice of pie. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item number four, Discussion on Vacancy of Seat 4 on the Council. Would you like to lead this? Or would you like to lead this?
Oh, vacancy. So we have received two applications for the vacancy for City Council Seat 4. We received an application from Sam Marchand and from Rex Lehman, both who were currently Planning Commission members. Those applications were emailed to council. They were not published with the agenda, because they're not ADA compliant. So I can bring them up, and you can look at them in your council chair folder if you have any questions about them. But then, that's just discussion amongst yourselves.
I would want to hear from both of them, if they don't mind standing up and just talking through it. I've read their resume. If they don't mind, since they're both here. Rex, you go first.
Good evening. Do I need my address and phone number? I mean, my address...
If you would, just your...
Rex Lehman, 21230 Placca Drive. I moved to Dunellen 15 months ago. I was very active in Palmetto Bay in their politics. I was on the Village Manager Advisory Council, because we had a lot of things going on in Palmetto Bay. We have about 26,000 people. And one thing is, I realized, is we would have 400 people come to a council meeting to say no to a development. 200 would speak, and they cut it off, and then three of their shills would get up and say, yeah, we need this. And then they go five to oh, five to zero. And after I went out and campaigned for all these people, they all said, we're not going to have development. I'm not anti-development, but down there, it was just excessive. And like, the problem you've got with the police department. One of the things that went on down there was, they put up a 10-story building, and they put in 5,000 people. And then when you go back to the county and say, we need more police officers, well, that's coming out of your budget, and it's not... And we got back 16 cents on the dollar versus what you get. And they would say, well, you have to pay for the police officer, so it ended up costing us money. And my real drive is that communities only succeed when people who live there get out and get involved. And they've got to come from a place where they want to see everybody around them do better than they do. And that's what I want to see, is that... I want to walk down the street and know that everybody in Dunellen's life is maybe a little better, a little easier, because I chose to stand up and say what I want to say and do what I want to do, and put the time and effort into it. I know I don't have a lot of experience up here, but generally, I've seen a lot of people over the years. And communities are all the same. There's 1,000 people, 800 want to go home and not do anything. And just assume somebody else is going to do it. But out of that 100 people, there's maybe 20 or 30 people who get involved and make a difference. And those are the people who, depending upon their attitude towards people and their attitude towards their community, can steer in any direction. And listen to what you said about the police department tonight, that we have to start looking, and it's done, about where we have to sit down and decide what we're going... We've got to decide. And I want to be one of the people who has a choice in it. I want to be one of the people that, when I walk down the street, I can look at any one of you and say, how are you doing today, because I didn't stab you in the back for both or something stupid. Good government starts with good people. Good people go good communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Okay. Sam?
My name is Sam Marchand. I reside at 19293 St. Patrick's Drive. I don't have no experience in politics and city stuff and that, but I wanted to get involved when I moved here. Little town here. I know it's hard to get things down here with the tax money you get, because there's only 2,000 population. I agree with the one lady that said that we should try to annex in Rainbow Lakes Estates. There's a big population there. And I don't know what's going on with this, the city department, police department, but that's news to me, what I just heard tonight. But I think that Dunellen should have their own police department and not Marion County in here. And they should have kept the fire department there, too, because they still had backup from Marion County.
Right.
I'd like to be on the board and make decisions that are the right decisions for the amount of money that the city gets and what needs to be appropriated out to get things done. And my main concern is roads and city neighborhoods to get them up to looking better than driving on dirt roads. And taking care of the waterway, the river. That's the main resource of this city right here. So taking care of that river and having opinions on it, and what needs to be done. I'd like to be a part of everything in this city, if what needs to be decided. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody on the council have any questions of these two individuals they want to ask?
I do.
You don't? Okay. First of all, I want to thank Rex and Sam for stepping up. Both of you, I hate to say it this way, remind me of the four of us sitting here. I never dreamed I would be in politics, and Dan sure didn't believe I'd ever be mayor, okay? But you just wake up one day, and you roll up your sleeve, and you go away. I think both of you gentlemen would be excellent for our city. And I hope you understand what I'm about to say next. Whoever gets appointed to this position, the one... And I appreciate you both standing up and applying for this. Thank you. All right? And that vote will be win-stayed, so just hold your breath. It'll all be good. But again, please don't give up if you happen to be the one who doesn't get selected, because I think both of you would be wonderful. Just my own thought. Okay. Let's see. Oh, number five, Proclamation for the National Day of Prayer.
Yes, this is a proclamation that was requested. And this is one that's pretty standard that they come in to us and request every year. And really, all you're going to do on Monday is just approve it on the consent agenda, and then they will be here, right? She's going to be here to accept the proclamation during the regular meeting.
Okay.
And then Councilman Enske is going to attend their event on May the 4th. Representative. That's really all I have to say about it.
I have a question. Where is this organization located? Who do they represent?
It's different people.
Is it multi-denominational or Christian or?
I don't know that they're part of an organization. We've had different people come in. It's not always the same person that comes in and requests it, but it's pretty much the same proclamation that they provide us with every year. It was Pastor Welch in Maryland that used to attend a lot of the meetings that made the request for a number of years consecutively, and I don't recall who it was before that, but it's just individuals. I don't know that they have an affiliation necessarily with anyone.
Are they residents of Dunellen or outside the city?
We don't ask them that.
I'm sorry?
We didn't ask that.
Didn't ask that? Could you send me by email some information on the organization?
I can send you the request that they sent us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because the reason I'm bringing this up, this is like people coming and asking for donations. When people continue to come here and ask us to sign proclamations, why are we doing this? How is the city going to participate? Why would we sign a proclamation if the city's government, administration, and so on aren't participating in this event or proclamation? Usually a proclamation proceeds an event some kind. So, I would like to question why we were doing this.
Prayer doesn't cost anything.
Any other council people like to comment on this?
I did send some follow-up questions to Mandy, because I was curious as well as who had requested it, and she provided some feedback on that. I think maybe having an overall conversation about proclamations at a later time, because I understand your questions. I don't know that your questions are real specific to this, but proclamations in general. I've seen a lot of different proclamations kind of come to council from groups and individuals, and I've also wondered about the connections. Some people might say, oh, it doesn't cost us anything, it's free, but really, the staff's time and the council's time, we're talking about it right now, time is money, and I think that this would be a good thing to look at, maybe not specific to this request since it's already on the table, but you could put it on a future workshop agenda and talk about the value and the interest of continuing this.
And as I pointed out, we don't have a policy on this. We never have. And requests have just come in usually through the city clerk's office. Sometimes they come through council members. We have council members who have been approached about a proclamation, and we have been asked by council members to honor some requests for proclamations. So, you know, until we decide whether or not we're going to have a policy and put something in place that, you know, doesn't discriminate against one or the other, either you just, I guess, don't know that you could, it would be wise to pick and choose who you're going to, you know, allow to make those requests, but maybe some sort of policy that says, you know, you have to have the request in so far in advance that it has to be brought to council for, you know, approval or disapproval to move it forward. But sometimes that's, like in this case, you know, we sometimes get them a month or so in advance, but it may be after our workshop or after our meeting, and they want it for the next month. So, if, you know, we had a policy in place that gave us some guidance as to whether or not we would, you know, just automatically honor those requests, or any future request would have to come before you, before you would agree to say, yes, let's move it forward.
Yeah, just like to add to that saying, I think it would be more appropriate to honor proclamations that originate within our city and involve our citizens. For example, proclamation to honor all of Dunellen City's veterans on Veterans Day or whatever, and then we have an event, and that's what I'm trying to say, that it's something that actually involves members of the city.
Well, I want to understand, this event is held in the city, and they've had, they have held the event down here at Boat Ramp before. They're holding it at the library this year. So, it's being, the event itself is being held within the city, within the community, but I don't know who's going to be participating.
Okay, thank you.
I need to correct something. Michelle, when you came to me and asked me if I could do this on the 4th, I thought you meant this week. May 4th, I could do it if you want me to. Tim's already volunteered, but.
Ask it to you.
Okay. I'm good either way, Wally. Okay. I'm sorry. When you said the 4th, my mind went to tomorrow anyway. Okay. All right. Is there any discussion on this, other than Jan's very wise discussion, I think, that we need to make sure this is done in Dunellen? And again, when I hear the program's going to be here in Dunellen, again, that will enough for me, but, you know, we need to understand who is putting this on in the future. Y'all good with this? Okay. All right. I would say we put this on the consent agenda and go forward. Okay? All right. The next item, Boat Launch Program. Jan Smith, financial officer, agreement with Safe Park and the Watercraft Launch Fee Program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Safe Park did provide a contract. It needed some major edits, and we did pass it out to all of you for your review. Andrew added his comments, made changes that were necessary, and it's gone back to Safe Park for their input, because there are still some missing pieces, such as, what equipment are they going to provide? That really needs to be spelled out. So, this was really just provided for your initial review. You'll note in the contract, it does state that the city would receive a net amount of $8 per launch. That's to allow, you know, Safe Park to cover their costs. If you are okay with that, we can, and the contract comes back and it's to Andrew's satisfaction, we can move forward with that. Now, what that does, though, is, we still have to pay sales tax on the full amount of the launch. So, I calculated that we would really net $6.95 per launch. And that's for anybody that pushes out a boat ramp. So, that can be, you know, still up for discussion, but we really need to talk about the resolution of the fees. So, until we talk about the fees, that's just a comment that I'm bringing forward that is in their contract currently. So, if you still want to move forward, we'll just wait on an updated contract, and hopefully, I don't know if we'll have it for Monday, but I would, I'll push for May at the very latest, so we can at least start to move forward with this. So, that's really all I have to, as far as to say, as far as the contract goes.
I appreciate this. No, I noticed the $7, $8 split, and I couldn't quite figure out what it was, but now you sales tax, that's what it was. Okay. Got it. Along this, I think we keep going. If they come back with a contract on this, and it's what we want, I think we keep this moving. There is something I need to relay to everyone on the council. After much phone tag over the last two weeks, I was able to reach the Florida Wildlife Commission about the possibility of taking this ramp back. And the answer was not no, but it was not yes. Okay? It was, wow, let us think about this. Let me investigate this some more. Very nice lady, I talked to with them, and she said she'd get back with me in the next few days or weeks and let us know whether that was one way or another. And we would go from there. So, that is also going on. But I'd say we still keep proceeding with this. And if we get a contract, great, you know, and if this happens, then we can decide what we're going to do. She was available to give me some guidance on ways that if the city wanted to keep it, how we could possibly get grants to actually do 100% of the cost of whatever we're going to do. And that was very enlightening. But anyway, that's a whole nother matter. But I said, my personal opinion is keep this moving, because we have no other option, really. I mean, what do y'all think?
I have some questions.
Okay, sure.
I know that you had mentioned at the end of a meeting about the possibility of giving the ramp back, and now I'm getting the update that you spoke with someone, so I'm just wondering if you can speak at all to the benefits of, it's my understanding that when FWC had the ramp, that they were responsible for the repairs and the maintenance and that kind of thing. Of course, when they had control of the ramp, we couldn't get any revenue from it. So, are you familiar with the costs and benefits of giving it back versus keeping it? Or is that something that maybe you can learn more about as you speak?
Clearly, if we go through the process of putting in our kiosk or whatever we do, and we're going to get half of this revenue, okay? If we give it back, we'll get nothing.
Understood.
But we will also give up the headache of building. And to me, I've heard from a lot of people that don't even want to charge for this ramp. And to me, that's, if we're going to have it, we got to charge. So, because we're going to have to maintain it and keep it up and everything else. They even admitted to me on the phone today that, yeah, they knew exactly which ramp it was, and there were some issues with the ramp that needed to be addressed. But that's when she brought up the idea, there was waste, that we could get grant money to pay 100% of the cost if we decided to do that.
And then sometimes the grant money precludes us from charging.
Well, it might.
It's, it's, so as you say that you're in support of continuing to move forward, because you don't feel, so there's another way right now, I respect that. I also have been thinking about some of the other moving parts with the prospect of a kiosk and charging people, and one of those is, I don't know, maybe I'm off, but the actual spaces that we have. And so, I reviewed the agreement that we have right now with local business to offer them up to 40 spots in this parking lot. So, as we try to push forward to get this agreement settled, I'm thinking about just the availability of the parking that we have, that we're potentially charging people for. It just seems to me like there's a lot of moving parts and other things that need to be fixed before we simply move forward with this. Part five of this document that was sent out is all about enforcement, and I think that in the past, when we've done this kind of thing, we fallen short, or we haven't had good communication on what enforcement is going to look like. So, while I know that this boat ramp discussion seems to be going on and on and on, and Jan Smith has spent tons and tons of hours at it, I'm concerned about all the moving parts and a continued discussion about those just as much as our discussion about the contract. Thank you.
I have a comment. My comment would be, if we should return the boat ramp back to the state of Florida, yes, they will maintain the ramp, but that's only a small part of that facility out there. I mean, that parking lot needs to be repaid, we're talking about expanding the area and so on, and Jan has her hand up and wants to be recognized.
I was going to talk about this later, but we have applied for a Florida Voter Improvement Program grant to help, this is an initial grant to help with the permitting, engineering, and design of this whole area, including the parking lot. So, there are grants available, because really, we're looking at almost a major redesign from the edge of the parking lot to back here, which we could still go for, even if the boat ramp was turned over back to Fish and Wildlife, we could still possibly qualify for a grant to maintain the rest of the area and to eventually maybe put in a kayak launch, because that's part of the design, is to make a third lane, so to kind of get that started. Where the kayak launch, I don't know if that would end up being a part of the Fish and Wildlife grant at all, as far as the property, but that, that's just another piece of it.
Tim?
Okay. So, I'll start out with a clarification. When I go through the maps for what some of the other, with some of the businesses out here, I think mostly we're talking about Blue Gate or the 40 spaces, that they need to stay in compliance, both compliance have a business there for their amount of, the restaurant seats and their motel there. When I look at the maps, the Centennial Park Boat Ramp, I don't believe is part of that. Looks like to me it's the overflow parking and the parking lot next to the Southern Kitchen. Just want to throw that out there. When I go through the contract, here's my comments. Andrew has a comment in there, the company is inactive in SunBiz, and that's a concern of his. It's a concern of his, it's a concern of, it's a concern of mine. Where do we stand there, Andrew?
I can recheck this evening, but the company is currently, at least it was inactive previously, and I know that Jan had addressed that with company. Is there some new information on that?
Not new. When I had spoken with Dilshon months and months ago, he said they had gotten that straightened out, because it was just a matter of them filing the annual report. And he said that was all straightened out, so this would have to be readdressed. Maybe there was a blip or something, but he assured me at that time that everything was going to be fine.
Is there a short version you can explain to us what that means, what SunBiz being registered means?
Sure. SunBiz is essentially the web version of the Division of Corporations in the state of Florida. Each year, when you have an LLC or a corporation, an entity doing business in the state of Florida, they have to file an annual report. It's not a complicated process, it's not a big expense, and, you know, there are a number of, especially smaller companies, that oftentimes just, they forget to, they don't file. When it does not happen, then they are essentially revoked, and they have a status of inactive. So, it's not legal for them to do business as that entity, per se. So, they're responsible for filing the correct paperwork with Division of Corporations and paying that annual fee. And according to SunBiz right now, just rechecking, that still has not happened, if this is, of course, the correct agency, which, pardon me, LLC, which is named Safe Park LLC and has a principal address in Ohio.
So, at least for me, that's a red flag.
The city could not enter into a contract with the business until they're standing. It would not be a legal contract.
And just to go a little bit further, I guess it bothers me, it's a red flag for me that they would even let it last. I won't go any further. When I look at the When I look at the agreement, I thought we were talking about a 50-50 agreement. This looks to be something a little bit different. And I'm not looking to go a lot of conversation other than put that out. When I see 50-50, if it's $10, five goes their way, five goes our way. And so on. When I look at Section 3, Paragraph III, it has a $15 per launch, $100 per annual pass. And I thought in the last meeting, we agreed to $10 per launch and $75 for an annual pass.
We haven't discussed fees at all, so I let that stay. And the company, we just, we talked about it, but not really discussed it for resolution purposes. So that...
I thought we settled on that last meeting.
I didn't gather that we settled on that.
Okay.
So the fees are still up in the air.
Okay.
So the fees in the contract would need to be changed if they're gonna be done.
Okay, gotcha. 4.1, I'd like to see that reworded. I'd like to get rid of the word minimum or at minimum. And this is where we're talking about the equipment.
That would be reworded once there is an entire list of equipment. As of right now, there has been no provision of information of exactly what they would be providing. So that particular phrase will be tailored to however it needs to be and an addition of maintenance requirement added to it.
Okay. Because kind of what I was looking at is get rid of the word at, the two words at minimum and add to include, but not limited to, after the word below. And basically, it would state that manager shall provide the equipment specified below to collect, you know, without exception. Well, something's missing off the list, you know, happens to be missing off the list. It's, the list does not have to be all inclusive. The intent is that they pay for everything that has to do with all the equipment. No, we'll carry on. Jan, I think you answered my question on this one. 4.4, are we tax exempt? We're not in this situation?
Not when we're collecting, when we're charging the fee. We have to pay sales tax to the state of Florida, and we do get a portion of that back.
Okay. Section 5, which is the violation part, where does the violation money go to? Is a ticket written?
A ticket is written, and I don't know how it would work with what was talked about tonight with the police department, but it normally goes back to fund the police department.
Okay.
A ticket is broken up into various parts and pieces, but it's all applicable to the police department.
Okay.
And that's what it's used for, but in light of what's...
Right, other than what transpired tonight, right. We understand that's gonna...
And enforcement may be an issue.
Right.
Just going forward, there may be no enforcement.
I'm with you.
That's a possibility unless we have a...
Right.
Old term meter maid type...
Right, yeah. We have to figure all that out, right.
Yeah, so that would be something else that really would need to work out.
13.1, I couldn't determine who pays for the permitting, et cetera.
The manager applies for and secures in its own name, so they're responsible for securing all the permits.
Okay, so securing means virtually they pay for it, too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm done, thank you.
So again, the fees have not been finalized.
They have.
That's the way I... Because again, I saw some things as well. Back to this, and I don't want to defer too much. Somebody in Ohio trying to remember to file tax returns in Florida is not a disaster, okay? I used to file tax returns in all 50 states. Every now and then, your client forgets to file one, and you go back and fix it. Okay. It is bad that it happened, but it's not disastrous, so to speak. Especially, there's usually, you gotta pay the tax, you may have to pay a fee or a fine. And you're very correct. Just because you're a city doesn't mean you are exempt from the sales tax. I used to have a very large university in Alabama as a client who had a very big football team. And they paid an awful lot of sales tax. Let's just put it that way. Okay? So just being an exempt organization doesn't mean you're exempt from sales tax. Okay. But no, these are all good points, Jim. Again, I think this is, needs a lot to be, to keep going. And again, I hope that you all understand my point of bringing up the possibility of giving it back to FWC is just an option. It doesn't mean that's really what we want to do. I think we keep both of these going. I mean, they, the state may come back and say, no, we don't want it. It's yawned. Or they may come back and say, yeah. And then, then I think we gotta make a decision. Do we want to keep pursuing this? If we give it back, we will get nothing. Okay? I can assure you of that. But then how do we handle the parking? How do we handle the parking out here? How do we handle all that? It's a whole separate matter.
Okay.
The other question's about the boat launch program. Now we have the fee program. I guess this is the ordinance, no, the resolution.
And counsel, I wrote this, you know, just with some information that we did discuss. Initially, it was a $15 launch. So this is all up for changing. But we really need to, in order to get this contract, at least in a semifinal state, we really need to talk about the fees and what you all would like to see. The ordinance addressed the enforcement piece, but it's really the launch fees. And if we're gonna do an annual pass, we kind of can't do resident versus non-resident because there's no way to differentiate between the two using a kiosk. Because look at the people that have a Danellin zip code. Their address is Danellin, Florida. They don't realize that it's only applicable to the corporate limits.
I totally agree with that. I mean, everybody in and around 50 miles here got a Danellin address, so that doesn't work.
Now, for a pass, we could enforce it because they could pay for a pass, but then we say, okay, within so many days, you have to commit a proresidency. And here at City Hall. And if they really aren't within our corporate limits, we could say, sorry, we can't issue you a pass. So that can be enforced.
Sure.
So it's all really what you'd like to see.
Any thoughts on that? Leave it 15 or in 50, or you wanna change it?
There is another option, such as what County does with KP Hold. If you want, anybody can purchase the annual pass. Anybody. Just pay the money, and they give you the badge, and it's punched, the month is punched out that it was purchased. Voila. The problem, though, is still when you get to the kiosk, how can you be checking? Who's gonna, who's gonna be? Somebody would have to literally visually check to see if you have a punched pass. Or perhaps you could go to the sticker, but then somebody brings a different vehicle to tow their boat. Their uncle's towing their boat, and they don't have the sticker on their vehicle. So it is a hornet's nest, the problems there.
I'm told the kiosk can handle, I believe it's up to 10 vehicles as far as a pass goes. And it would be a matter of probably punching in a license plate number, and then the kiosk basically verifies if it's a pass. So the kiosk can handle that.
Okay.
I will have to get some more information on exactly what that takes. But I'm not sure how much revenue you would really earn if you offer annual passes to everybody.
Could end up losing money.
You could lose a lot of, depending on how much your annual pass is.
Well, we only lose half of them. But, I mean, that's a funny way to look at it. But I mean, again, if we're getting half the fee... I agree with you. If we gave everybody in Marion County that wants to kayak down to Lake Russo for 50 bucks a year, I'm sure we'd have a lot of folks that might do that. Whereas $15 a launch, I mean, three launches are there. So, you know, I can see how that...
I don't think people, we're gonna lose a lot of business because other boat ramps in the surrounding area, they get just as crowded.
Right.
You have visitors who won't necessarily know about the other boat ramps or won't want to go anywhere else or just pay the fee. I mean, these are just my opinions.
Sure. Okay.
But it's entirely up to you what you would like to choose.
What do y'all think?
I think 15's a little steep. We have a lot of people that are just outside of city limits that use the river a lot for fishing, et cetera. And I think it'd be fairly painful for them. My numbers were $10 for launch fees, $75 for an annual pass. Okay. What map you'd use?
I'm not a numbers person, so doing the numbers to see what the revenue would be, to how we would make out, I will leave that up to all of you. I just feel like as we're talking about this, and maybe it's just the way my mind works, but there's a lot of, like, headaches and things that aren't worked out. And so then we're like, now let's arrive at a cost for the ticket. And I'm feeling like I'm still trying to understand, is our parking lot set up properly? Do we, you know, have we taken... You had mentioned that the restaurant goers refuse to only be using designated lots, which is great. But is that something that has been enforced? And all the headaches that could come with it? And there's this same boat ramp nearby that's free. The whole thing to me, I'm just struggling with it. So to come up with a number, I wouldn't, I couldn't. I'm just interested in what FWC says. And then at that point, I would be willing to continue the conversation.
Jan, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with Juliana, and the parking situation is very problematic.
Very.
Now, before we take the leap, we need to straighten that out.
I come here on a weekday to do business here, and I can't find a place to park.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
I think if you implement the program, and I know we've talked about this, striping the parking lot, putting up signs. I've made a suggestion we should contract with a towing company. That if there's a car parked or a home trailer clearly designated, there's a sign that says you will be towed. They're towed, and the towing company keeps all the revenue. That's one way to enforce parking, the limited parking we have. I know it sounds mean, but when people blatantly ignore signs...
And I don't disagree, Jan. I just think that if all of these things need to be implemented, implemented to make this successful, then we should implement them before we move forward with all of the other pieces. I mean, if now we have a situation with public safety and the ability to enforce things, I think that has to fit into the equation. We're a city with a small stack and limited resources. And if we're gonna take on a project, let's just make sure it's not a hornet's nest where the people are just coming back and angry about something that's been implemented but not implemented in a really sound way.
Very true. Also concerned about just enforcement. I mean, I'd say this way, with our police situation, the way it is tonight, is Marion County gonna help us enforce this? I don't know. I think we just need to table this right now till we figure out some more. Just not go any further. Maybe I'll hear back from FWC, bring it back, tell you what they say we can or cannot do. Then if it's go, they won't give it back, all right, then we gotta address this, and we go from there. If we get it back, then, I don't know. The longer I get into this, the longer I realize this is just, like you said, a hornet's nest, canned hornet, or whatever. Every time we turn around, it's parking problems, enforcement problems, it's how much we're gonna charge, how many people are gonna make mad. That's when I reached the point of give it back to FWC, and you can just have it. We still got a problem in here with parking, but we can deal with that, I think.
Right, and I think that this council is about, let's go back to figure out what the fundamental problems are in the city and not just add layers upon it, only haven't fixed the layers. I think the agreement that is with the BlueGator comes up in August. And I'm wondering if the council has an interest in discussing that and what we're collecting from them and what it means for the residents who are trying to use City Hall and what we can do to really do that. That five years is up in August, I think.
Right, August.
So maybe we can get that on an agenda.
Okay.
Seeing that I'm the senior council member here in terms of meetings. If we go back to how this all got started when Mayor White was sitting, where Wally is sitting, the whole idea of taking that ramp, putting it possession of the city of Danellin, was to gain revenue. But it was not a deep thought. It's easy to say that, okay? We're gonna make money. But then we see all these complications. And I agree with Wally, let's table this. Let's table... The other thing is, we have representatives that represent our area. Representative Dunn and, I can't remember, is it in the news, though?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, we should communicate with our representatives about helping us push for some grant from FWC to improve the launch more. I would, when Troy was here, he mentioned the need for a parking lane to the right going down to the ramp so people who are staging, we call it staging in the kayak, kayaking world. Staging means putting that big kayak up on your, top of your roof of your SUV, getting it down. So it takes time, time, time. And what we're seeing here on the weekends is people getting irritated because they're backed up bumper to bumper trying to get their boat out of the river. And that is something we, we could use funding for that, stuff like that. So we move people in and out faster. The parking lot can clear faster and so on.
Okay, I would say if they respond with a new contract, let them respond and kind of keep that. But I'd say we just stop until we figure out this. This is, like I said, to me, the more we keep talking about this, the more it just gets confusing. And I'd say we just table this thing. I was all pushing for getting this in by time. You know, the boat would seize the star, and the kayak's seizing star, and everybody going to the water. But I just don't see it gonna happen. Okay. We good with that? Yes, sir.
Counsel, just one thing to point out. In 2020, the commission did provide a draft agreement. So the city does have a copy of that draft agreement. And of course, it's now 2023. Perhaps if the commission did come back and was interested in, it'll obviously be the city's boat ramp, but interested in managing the boat ramp and maintaining it. The terms might change, but that 2020 template is available. And I think that would answer some questions as to what they would cover versus what they wouldn't cover, at least what they, you know, had offered back in 2020.
Can we get a copy, all of us?
You all have it, I'm just gonna...
Okay, great, because again, that would help us try to figure this out, too. Thank you, Andrew.
And essentially, they would cover the boat ramp. They would not cover the parking as they had in previous years.
Right.
And the city will be responsible for any necessary engineering that had to be done for any major upgrades or for the infrastructure.
Okay. Well, engage us. All right. Now, oh, the ordinance at Blue Run Park Rules and Regulations. There's a draft of an ordinance that addresses no swimming in Blue Run Park, which is included and everything. Does anybody have any comments? I read it, and of course, I'm not eagle-eyed, Tim, here, but it looked pretty good to me. What do you think?
My only comment is, what's the penalty for violating? Yeah, the ordinance, I thought, was pretty simple, pretty well. But because it's got no teeth in it, what's it mean?
And how's it getting forced?
Right.
In our area.
Right.
Good point.
Enforcement would be the same as all of the other rules. I actually have to pull that from the portion of the ordinance since that's not included in here. This, this ordinance only takes those two sections, forty-six seventy-seven and forty-six seventy-eight. I can't look it up right now because it, it's not codified yet on municipal code, otherwise I could tell you. But essentially, it would be the same structure for enforcement that would be applicable to the boat ramp if that were to go to a private contractor. There's an ordinance in place, I know Chief is more familiar with it than I am, that allows a police, police office, pardon, the police department, an officer to, to write a ticket, and then it goes, you know, through that enforcement process, through the city's contract with the county if somebody wishes to appeal it. So this would be, you know, at least from an enforcement standpoint, the same as every other rule here. Now, of course, this is crafted in a way, so you're not allowed to enter the water essentially from the river access ramp. It is a sovereign body, so swimming in itself can't be controlled without some additional state type of action. But it's making it very clear that the boat ramp is not there for swimmers to use.
Right. You know, that's something that I thought about today, again, with the situation with police, is how do we enforce this, and again, that's something I guess we'd have to cover with the sheriff. I know in the past, Marion County's helped fund having a police officer or sheriff at the, at the Blue Run Park. Will they continue doing that, and if so, can they help enforce this? Because again, like you pointed out, Tim, it's a great ordinance, but it is not enforceable. How do we deal with it? We hire somebody to put down there? That, I don't see that as an answer.
I agree, learning about the enforceability. I also wanted to follow up, Mandy, I don't know if you, do you know who posted the sign of the other prohibited activities at Blue Run Park?
I did reach out to Mr. Coolard at the county and asked if they had posted the sign and how that would be enforced, and all he responded with was that yes, they posted the sign.
Okay, I just didn't know while we were looking at this, and I reviewed it, and I didn't have any concerns. I didn't know if there was any value in trying to add those things, if it was even within our, you know, purview to add it.
And what she's referring to is there was a sign posted at Blue Run Park that said no soliciting, selling, no menus, no, I, I can pull it up.
Was that to stop food or something out there?
I was looking at the, the ordinance that has the violations, that, in the Blue Run Park ordinance, it says all municipal code fines under this article will be fifty dollars per violation. So that's, that will be the, the violation for, the, the fine for violating the provision of that ordinance. The... It's a little weird having to jump back to this version. Now, here's the sign. And that was, that was posted by the county. That was the only confirmation that I got was it was posted by the county.
I'm just interested in if there's any value in this, Jan, as we update, as we update this document that we're looking at. If not, that's fine. I would also see, you know, if the county is able that one of these signs goes at the other end of the park, because I noticed it is effective at the, it's effective near the ramp, but some of this activity continues to go on at the far end of the park. So posting this at the other, post at the other end of the park would be great.
Yeah.
And, and I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that the county's ordinance addresses all of this at all of their parks, because they prohibit this kind of activity, activity at all of their parks. So as far as any enforcement, I think it would fall under what they already have in place, but I'm, I'm not saying it wouldn't hurt to put it in ours, too, but I think that's why they sent it, because they can enforce it.
Great. And you could follow up with them about a second sign?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would think we'd almost need one, we'd almost need three or four signs with all the ways you can get into this park. But anyway, that's, that's a good point, totally. Jane, any comments on the sign? Okay. Are you okay with the ordinance?
Absolutely.
I, I am totally fine with it. Don't we have to have a certain number of readings, like two readings of this ordinance before we can go any further?
Yes, you could have first reading next week on Wednesday.
Okay.
And then you'd have to advertise, and then you'd have a final public hearing and a final reading next month.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna add this to agenda to talk about the sheriff, about enforceability.
Right. Yeah, I've been making the other little thing here to talk about.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of the ordinance, but yeah, I would say we need to have a reading of this next week and get this going. All right, Department head vacancy is the next item on the agenda, item number eight.
Yes, and I sent all of you sort of a breakdown of the two applicants that, that we felt were the most qualified and should be considered for the position. One of them being Chad Ward, who is our current code enforcement officer, and the other being Stephen Roberts, who worked for the water, wastewater facilities down in Fort Lauderdale. So I, I just summarized their education, experience, work history, knowledge, skills. Some of this came from their application, some of it came from their interview questions.
Can you put that on the, on the screen for people at Orient? Thank you.
So here's, here we go. Let me know if I'm scrolling too fast. It's also in your, in the backup folder, too.
Right, I remember seeing this, yep. Anybody have any questions about these two gentlemen? I mean, I know you sent all this out, and I remember studying it. I hope everybody did.
And, and yes, you all were provided with their, their individual applications and the summary, and I did include some language from the personnel manual when I sent that out regarding promotion from within. I know a few of you have expressed to me that you would be interested in, you know, appointing Chad to that position and as a cost savings to, to include code enforcement, because he agreed that if he were offered the position, that he would still manage code enforcement and oversee code enforcement in that role. So I, I did some calculations and sent that out to you guys. So there would be a cost savings there, not having to backfill his position. So if you would like, I can go back to the, the email that I sent you guys, or you just let me know.
I'm good. I'm good. You all, you all good?
I'm good.
Okay. Jane, you good with that? She sent that out.
Sure.
On each one?
If it's appropriate, I'd like to make a comment, my own personal opinion of the two candidates. Steve Roberts seems to be involved basically with Water Works, Water Utilities, and so on, and that isn't what is incorporated within our Public Works Department. We, as you all know, Blue takes care of that, whereas this is more of a, a general contracting overseer of landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, working with engineers, all those persons responsible within the county, getting those grants and so on. So I would think Chad Ward stands above the other candidate, Stephen Roberts.
I observe that same thing from his work experience with Steve Roberts. He's got a lot of experience, not exactly what we need, but whatever.
Okay.
I like your analogy. Come on.
Come on, Jim.
Our Public Works is not NASA.
It's not NASA?
No, so.
It's all work.
Right.
It just works.
Right, so we don't need a rock scientist, I don't believe, to fill this position. To add on with you, Jan, one, we know what we have with Chad, everybody's pleased with him in many ways. I think there's a lot of value in having code enforcement come with Public Works. Folks spread out in the field so they can do things with the, and help out there. And I'm done.
So the idea that within the forty hours, Chad would be managing Public Works as well as doing code enforcement pieces?
He would still, yes, and he could oversee code enforcement. He might not have to do as much of the physical things because he is, if he has a staff, if he has a, a full staff, because he has the certification, he can use staff to like go out and pick up signs, or, you know, when they're out working and teach them how to identify code violations and report them back to him, and he said he felt that that would be very manageable.
Okay, and that could be interim, and we could reevaluate then if we wanted to look at somebody additional for code enforcement. I just don't wanna cut code enforcement off of these just as we're getting started.
Yeah, no, he said he, he felt very confident that he could do both, that he could utilize the staff to, you know, do some of the stuff that he's doing, you know, like going out and riding around looking for violations and things like that, and pulling signs, whatever it may be. He could train his staff to do some of that stuff, and, and his would be more the, you know, as a certified code enforcement officer, preparing the notices, and he's got a staff member that can help do that, too.
Very good, thank you.
Any more?
Basically, the intent is he would have more resources rather than less to help out with that. We can visit that in the future if it comes a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we will vote on that at the next meeting as well.
Yes, sir. And, and it looks like I was gonna offer to have both of them come to that meeting if you wanted to speak with either one of them or have either one of them introduce themselves, but you've already met Chad, and if there's a consensus that that's, you know, how you want to proceed, then I don't wanna have to bother Mr. Roberts to have him come over here.
I do not. I don't either. I, I, I think we've kinda made up our minds. Again, as I told you, I think a known product and a good product, you know, nothing against Steve, but I think we stay with what we got.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't ask him to come to a meeting.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Mendocino, you have a number of items on the agenda.
I do, I just have two. So Blue Run Park Shade Pavilion, I would like to see about moving this to discussion at the next CRA meeting, because really, it's a project in the CRA district, and if we're approached for funds, it would be CRA funds, and I'm a real fan of keeping all CRA things at the quarterly CRA meeting. So if everyone is interested in learning more about that project, I think that there's already been a lot of work underway, a lot of research on costs and contractors and plans, and I think that it's coming to us as a fully developed idea that we may agree with or disagree with. But if you're willing to hear it, I can arrange for Mr. Viver to give us a presentation at the next CRA meeting. If you're not interested in hearing about it, I can accept that, too, and we'll know how to move forward.
Okay.
So you can put that on for the next CRA meeting? Okay.
When, when is that?
Okay, I was gonna say, because that's every quarter, and I couldn't remember where we were.
Yeah, it's gonna be May the eighth. Would you guys be interested in a presentation on the progress of planning the Shade Pavilion at Blue Run Park?
Okay. Will this include what the county already has done?
Yes.
Sure. Sounds good to me. We, we discuss it then.
Jan, you all for a presentation, then? Thank you. The other agenda item that I had is office functionality, and this comes from several months ago. I met with Mandy, and we talked a little bit about, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but it's been a little while since we talked about it, and there was, we were talking about progress with the, is it called Cloud, the program for permitting, and I know there were some hiccups. And then I think Jan had been looking into someone coming in to talk about how the different programs within the office communicated with one another, and if we really had the best setup to make the office successful. So I'm just looking for any updates today on where we're at with the functionality of the office.
Well, we discontinued trying to move forward with the cloud permit software, because the, the existing software that we have, that we've been using, that was implemented, it was a module, it was an additional module to the existing financial system. So that was a few years back, because Theresa and Lonnie were both still here. We added the permitting module to Munis, and they've been using that. And there are some things that, that Kelly had, you know, said that they're not really, you know, happy about with that system, but it's working for now, and I didn't feel like it was worth them still struggling to try to, it's almost like duplicating work, because we're, we're using Munis, but we're trying to migrate the cloud permits, so it was almost like double work. So we decided to just forget the cloud permit, just suck it up and be done, and continue working with Munis. But also, I've asked Jan to start looking at other financial system software where I believe we can save some money. Munis has gotten very expensive over the years, and, and she has reached out to a couple people and, and has been, I don't know where you are with the B, BSNA?
We would need to go for RFP.
Okay.
Because of the costs.
Right.
Especially implementation. Implementation can run us about a hundred thousand dollars, which is not unusual to migrate to other software. So we would need to go for RFP, and I was gonna speak to that tonight to see if council would authorize us to go for RFP for an enterprise recording system is the new lingo. But it's new financial software that would integrate multiple departments, including community development, co-employment, and permitting, and various other functions. We were given a short demo on BSNA, which all of us participated, and it looks very promising. It has good reviews. Bell here has used it since 2013, Crystal River uses BSNA, so. But their unit pilot technology, which is, which provides the Munis product, has also come back with a proposal. They have software that specializes, that specializes for small municipalities. They were even surprised that we're using this, that it's for a much larger open city. So anyway, if we can get the go-ahead to go for RFP, we will pursue it, or we're looking, you know, at improving.
Okay.
But we won't go cost until we get all the permits.
So as far as the cloud permitting, I know that that was pretty recent, that we had initiated that, and they spent a lot of time on it. So do we like end the formal contract with them? So do we like end the formal contract with them or is that something that we're still paying for?
No. We had to pay, we terminated the contract, but we won't be able to get any of the initial upfront costs that we put out.
Okay. And I think that really, we're interested, as council, in just getting it right so that the city has what they need to function. As far as a new contractor, this BSNA, I guess I would just ask that we're forward with some information so that we can really sort of be in the know and be together in making the decision about the next software package.
Yeah, we would want to make sure that it, that it would satisfy the needs of community development for what they're looking to try and to do, to be able to do more stuff in the cloud. Where if an inspector is out in the field, they can actually go in and like update a permit.
Sure.
Where we don't have that availability right now. So all that will have to be looked at, what's, you know, what these companies are able to offer. And try to keep everything, it's always best to try to keep everything in one system so that, you know, so that it ties to the general ledger, so Jan's not having to do manual journal entries.
Sure.
Permits that are getting posted to a different software system. And of course, we were under the impression that that was not going to be the case. And it turns out it is with cloud permits, so.
Yeah.
And in RFP, we'll address all the issues. And we would compare the companies side by side with whatever we require that's provided. So, and you all would see that.
You got any questions?
I got a question slash comment. Didn't we just pay thousands for the little apartment? You guys did talk, didn't we just pay thousands to upgrade these?
We are not through upgrading, but we have to continue. We will no longer have support by December 31st. And an RFP we're looking at for the next budget year, we would go out for RFP, but we wouldn't be able to start until October. And Munis would need to be involved in data transfer and everything. So yes, we have just, we're in the process of spending a lot of money to upgrade, but we don't have a choice.
Gotcha, okay. This is going to sound harsh, going to be the cell for the new program sounds similar to the cell for the cloud program. What's different, but that's not going to happen?
This is a full financial reporting software program. Cloud Punkt, it wasn't. Cloud Punkt had just a singular functionality. Whereas we're talking about different modules. If we had utilities, it would include utilities.
Okay.
It's the same system that we currently have.
Okay.
Only going forward will be a lot less expensive.
Okay. But you understand the skepticism?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why an RFP is going to address all the functionality that we require.
Okay, and is there a way to test drive it? We'll get into all that later.
We can ask for demos. Test driving with our data, no. But as far as a demonstration, ask ably.
Okay, thank you.
But I'd just like to say, too, when, you know, we've been with Munis since 2000. I mean, we've been with them for a long time. But back then, we had the water sewer utility. So it was the financial software, payroll, HR, utility billing, and then accounts receivable. So all of these are in one software component. They're all tied together, all linked together. And then the permitting module was added a few years back. So then cloud permit was just this program sitting out here by itself that didn't talk to anything else that we already have. And what Jan's talking about doing is duplicating what we have today where, whether it's with Munis or BSNA, where you have all of your modules linked to one another who are the same provider. And permit, permit model being a part of that. It won't be another independent module on its own like Cloud Punkt.
Is there a short version of what's the difference between this and Granicus?
No, that's completely, completely.
Two different animals?
Oh, yeah, two different animals.
Okay.
And that's, Granicus is still underway, right?
Yes, we're actually working, we, with, Michelle and I have been working quite a bit with the developer for the website and building the wireframe, which was a new word for me. I'd asked, what is that? But, but yeah, it's just trying to like look at our site and make sure we get all the pages brought over that we need and what they can import over that we don't have to recreate. And looking at the design, you know, what do we want it to look like? What are our colors and this and that, so.
Yeah, just to clarify, for Tim, the Granicus piece is going to be the meetings online as opposed to, we'll no longer use YouTube and all these documents everywhere. But that would be how the community can interface with our meetings. Whereas the other office functionality Munis stuff was the payroll and the permitting and all the people behind the scenes.
Thank you. And we're just happy with the progress so far with Granicus?
I would like to be further along, but I don't have, there's only one of me and one partner.
No, well, my question is, are we happy where we're at with the product as Harvard is working through? We're still happy with, with the product itself?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And they've been, they've been really great to work with. The project manager that was assigned to us is very knowledgeable. Always during our meetings, we meet with him about, what, over two weeks? And, and, you know, say, okay, we finished this, this is where we are. And he's always able to answer all of our questions. And I just wish that we could do, we could get more done faster, but there's just so much time in the day and so much stuff going on.
Right, right.
I would like to be further along, but we're still looking at probably a few months out before it's live.
Cool, I just want to make sure you're all still happy with where you're at right now with it.
Jan, do you have any comments on this?
No, the only comment I have is when you told me y'all been on this system since about 2000. Again, in my world, I don't know how it stayed together that many years. But the other thing is, it is going to be very expensive to do the transition. But if I'm understanding what y'all told me is the annual cost would go down. That's what, that's what I thought. So, yeah, we got to mic this bullet to get all the data moved over. But once we're there, the annual cost of this is going to be significant.
Yeah, but I've had this start in the last year or two, really get more involved in that budget process and looking at things. And this last year, when I saw that we were spending $40,000 a year, I was like, there's got to be a bit of urgency. For just 20 something employees for payroll and accounts payable and business tax receipts and building permits. I just, I was like, we got to look at this. So Jan and I got together and I asked her to, you know, to please start trying to find something out there that's not so expensive.
Right. And clearly, I know $100,000 is a lot of money, no question about it. But, you know, when you factor in the fact it's going to go down significantly, the annual cost, you know, you got to bite this bullet, but down the road, you'll be paying a lot less. I'm for keep going. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
You're good, okay. Tim, you didn't have anything. Only a gem, I just. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, wow. All right, we'll make this real quick. FWC, the boat launch, we're talking about radar signs. I've given each one of y'all some information about radar speed signs. What you have in front of you is some information. My wife was able to accumulate and I was able to accumulate some more information concerning that. And it's just a thought, and I want to bounce this off you guys. I want you to read this and look over it. First thing I'll tell you about radar speed signs and the limited research I have done, they're not cheap.
Are you going to put them up?
Yeah, you can if you want to. What they are, is you notice they'll be, they're all tied together either solar or with batteries or with direct power. You put them where you feel like they're needed. They come, you can get them with their own poles, you can attach them to poles you already have. What they do is notify people as they drive by how fast they're driving versus how fast they think they're driving. I saw a lot of these, we were in North Carolina a year or so ago. I'd never seen them before and man, they're, they're interesting. I mean, some of them have like, that says 35 mile an hour. It'll flash and tell you how fast you're going, but then also tell you the speed of it's 35 mile an hour. You know, when I saw these things, again, I'm concerned about the speeding in this town. And very specifically, the bridge over the Wood Lakuches River coming in from Citrus County. If we decide we want to do this, and I'm not saying we're going to do it, I'm just saying I want you all to read this and give me your thoughts. If we had one there to notify people as they cross that bridge, just how fast they're going, which is not 35 miles an hour, maybe that'll encourage them to slow down. And then my other thought was if we decide to go with more, I would say, go to the other end of 41 out by Walmart, put one out there. 484 across the Blue Run, put one there, and then maybe 40 going out of there. Anyway, these things are not cheap. They come a number of different ways. The information that is up on the screen, we haven't gotten the price listing from them. I think the one I contacted was called Radar Signs. They were able to send me back some price listings in, again, since we're talking about big numbers. You can get them for as little as $3,500 a sign or up to $5,500 a sign. So they're, they're expensive. But again, think about it, is this something we want to buy any of these, buy two of these, buy none of these? I want y'all to read over this and give me your thoughts. I think it might encourage people to slow down.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Do we have to deal with DOT, get their permission, go to be permitting? What's the cost?
I don't know, I talked to the people.
I know if we put a sign anywhere?
No, no, you have to, of course, meet their guidelines. And I'm sure if we want to go forward with this, the guy I talked to is actually out of Atlanta, Georgia today. He said their people work with DOT and would help us get this done. And, but yeah, you can't just go out and stick one of these puppies up and.
Too bad, huh?
Yeah, and watch them get run over. No, you got to meet all the rules and regulations about that. This company says they would help us with that. Of course, they want us to contact DOT and tell them, hey, we want to put these up where we got to. So there's, there's a little bit more to it. But the cost is pretty high. That was the thing that I wanted to make sure everybody realized how much money these are. Any of it's too expensive?
And what part of our budget might that come out of? Our general fund, law enforcement?
Probably roads and streets, but Jan, you tell me.
Roads and streets.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, roads and streets, okay. Again, I saw them and I noticed, when I was in North Carolina for a week or so and everywhere, everywhere out there, I don't know how that town afforded them, now that I see how much they cost. But it did seem to slow the traffic down, and that's the whole point. On these major highways coming in and out of the town, I think one or two of these might make a lot of sense. But again, totally up to council, what y'all think or don't think about these monocle signs.
I'd like to read over it, so I appreciate the information. I think, you know, we just spent a year talking about $365,000 in wave finding signs. So I think that these signs have a function. If you can put it on the list when you talk to the sheriff, I think it would be important to.
No, no, it clearly is. I mean, again, with what's going to happen with the police, I mean, we've been, I have been complaining about speeding in this town. And it does bother me. Hopefully, this would slow people down. Again, I don't know what Billy Woods' thoughts would be on this, but we just go with that. Okay, I've got this information. Jan, Mandy, I have got from the other company, they sent me a whole pile of stuff. I'm going to send it to you and if you would distribute it to them. Again, it's just more data. There's actually a video or two that explains it. In fact, you might want to listen to that first and then the numbers and what they cost on here. We are getting the numbers on the one that's in the handout. I don't know how their prices are, but I just want to warn you, they're, they're real expensive. Okay. Next. What happened to mine, Jan? Oh, here it is. Okay, permitting, road closure fees, festival events, those kind of things. I noticed the other day, there was an article in a news article about Citrus County and actually the city of Crystal River were raising all their costs that they were going to charge for certain things. I thought that was very interesting. And it really, the article started off saying they hadn't raised rates for like six or seven years. And they look back, thought it would be good. Now, some of them, they raise, you know, from like permeating, building permits went from 1.25% to 1.5% with a minimum of $120. Some of their other special variances, fees went from $250 to $400. And it just made me think, how long has it been since we looked at the fee structure we have in this town? Whether it's building permits or variance permits or anything. And it just kind of shocked something off my head that said, you know, how long has it been since we looked at it? And are our fees comparable or where they need to be? And I don't know. But that's what this was about.
I thought we just revamped fees a few months ago.
We had to update our fee resolution because of what was, Marion County was now charging the $25 for the 911 for assigning the address for a new permit. But it's, it's been a few years. I want to say maybe going back 2018 or so, since we really looked at our fee resolution for, you know, as a whole for all of the things, you know, for building permits or, you know, special event fees and that sort of thing. Which, Chris River, I saw that while he sent. You know, they, theirs was really specific to, they had some fees that were more specific to special events than they do.
Yeah, I didn't bring that up, but I mean, like road closures for a special event was $1,500. Wow, I don't think we charged anything like that, if anything. But again, but then if you use one of the city's parks, it was like 200 bucks. But if you wanted to close a road, it was going to be $500. And again, you can see, they're encouraging people to use park, not on the road.
And I'm not sure, they might be charging that because they might be using their city staff to do that.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know.
So that, you know, they factored in the cost of their employees and come up with a fee that way.
Right. See, we just encountered the same thing, you know, Matt and I going through it with Judy. And so we're going to help the chamber out one last time, you know, for nothing. And actually, just to rent the barricades was a sticker shock, $5,500 just to rent barricades to close for Boomtown days, okay? So since we're in a transition period, I'll make this short. We're in a transition period right now, transitions come with some kind of pain. We didn't want to pass that kind of pain off to the chamber at this time. So we're going to set up the, stage the barricades, me, Matt. I'm just a mouse in his pocket. But speaking with Matt, it's four hours to stage them, you know, plus whatever fuel, et cetera. It's another three, four hours to pick them up and times that by city works employees, basically $30 an hour. You know, so it, there is some cost involved with all that. So, you know, at a later date, we were looking at, it was actually Judy's idea. Rather than giving the money, spending the money on an outside vendor, spend the money on the city. We'll come up with a cost for what it costs the Public Works to set them up and all that. But maybe this whole thing can be put on a workshop to take a look at this particular thing we're talking about and permit fees, take a look at what we charge for that.
Yeah, I mean, the article just hit me is how long has it been since we looked at all of our fees? And that, this article kind of, it was a whole host of fees that Crystal River was charging. You know, some of them I kind of looked at, thought, well, that's probably about what we're charging some of them. So, wow, this is, and like I said, I don't know how they came up with this and probably ought to reach out. So, wow, this is, and like I said, I don't know how they came up with this, and probably ought to reach out to Crystal River. It's like, you know, how'd you guys come up with these fees?
Right. My guess is they're recurring costs, and they've just realized it, um, you know, 'cause we were stunned when we seen the fifty-five hundred dollars just for barricades. And that doesn't include the staging or anything of them.
And the, and the other thing that, that the city was doing, um, before was we, we were going to the county, or we were going to FDOT and getting, um, the permits from them that were necessary for road closures. And I felt like I got some direction previously that, that these, that aren't great, Chamber, any of these nonprofits, I mean, I mean, 'cause you may have a church that comes and wants to have a festival, or you just come home, but, um, we just wanted to get some clear direction too from council going forward. We're going to accommodate anything for the special events. What, what do you approve us doing, what do you not approve us doing? And do you want to associate a fee with that? If it's something that the city's doing for the organization? Or do you want them to just, ideally, when we got, when we get the application for the special event, ideally, it would be nice if the other agency permitting process had already been done and was attached to that application, so we could see, okay, they've gotten approval from Marion County. If DOT approval was necessary, they've gotten that. And then, and then if we want to say, okay, well, the city will do barricades, and we'll charge a fee of X number of dollars, and work that into the fee resolution.
Sure.
That's kind of my thoughts on that, but of course, however y'all want to do it.
So we can add that to a workshop?
Yep.
Great. I'd like to add to that possibility of any revenue for City of Dan Allen by leasing Ernie Mills Park for private use, or for people that want to bring, let's say, a, um, a business-type fair here, let's say kayak. Everybody's kayaking. Everybody's got a kayak on the roof every other car on the weekends here. We could lease that park, and they could have a, a clinic, and have representatives there selling paddle boards, kayaks, whatever, and charge them a thousand dollars for the event. I, I think it would fly.
Yeah.
I'd like to say this weekend, I was on the spring run while I was on the river. While I was on that spring run, I met a couple from, from, uh, Montreal, a couple, a family of twelve from Colombia, and another family of like twelve to fourteen group. They were staying at a B and B here, and they were from France. So it's incredible what's going on here. We, we are on the map, and I think we should, we should take advantage of that. Expand our horizons a little bit, and cities and towns lease their parks, especially a smaller park like Ernie Mills, and collect the money, give the permits, make sure the people have liability coverage and so on.
Right.
And, and advertise through our city website. Put that on the agenda too?
Okay.
Can be part of the workshop, yeah?
Yes.
All right. Uh, the last thing I had was, I don't remember how I got this on here, but this rope fencing around City Hall. I think until we figure out exactly what we're gonna do with this parking lot, we should stop that. Clearly, there's boats and trailers and trucks parking everywhere. But I think there's gotta be a better way to organize this parking lot out here to where it'll accommodate more boats and more trailers. But let's don't put any effort and money into a rope fence right now, is my opinion. Okay, I don't know what y'all think.
I completely agree. Does it take a vote to close that project, or it doesn't?
I mean, if the whole idea with the rope fence was to permit people parking on grass, well, right now, I think we gotta fix the parking lot.
Does it take a formal vote to shut it down, or it doesn't?
I don't know. Do we need a vote to shut down the rope fencing?
I think just you give us consensus direction that we're not to pursue...
Right.
Getting quote or installation or anything like that.
Yeah, I would, I would just soon stop doing that, till we get this whole boat situation resolved. Okay, that's all I have. Department head reports.
While I'm getting my thoughts together, Jan, I know we talked about a few things you were gonna update council on, if you want to go ahead and do that.
Sure. Council, we have applied very recently for three grants. The first one was the legislative appropriation for a new police facility, one-point-eight-million dollars. I'm not sure where we're gonna go with that. I guess maybe further discussion will let me know if I maybe need to contact them to see if that needs to be pulled for any reason. We also applied for, for a cybersecurity grant in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars to harden our infrastructure, and to get into a state database where if, um, say we're, we're, I don't know what you'd call it, kidnapped, and ransomware is, is being demanded, we would be included in their database and follow-up investigations. So there is no match for that. Andy applied for that on the city's behalf, because he knows what we need. The, the last grant, which I mentioned earlier, was the Florida Voter Improvement Grant through FWC. That will improve this parking lot.
Will it?
It will. We talked about expanding it with the engineers, we just gave them, you know, some thoughts, taking the gazebo and maybe moving it back here and opening that up to more parking. So it, it's just a matter of formulating a design. It would be a several-million-dollar project. This grant, though, allows us to go for the permitting, design, and engineering. And it will cover a hundred-and-eighty-five thou, the project is a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar project. There is a city match of nine thou, roughly nine thousand dollars. What the Florida Voter Improvement Grant is, it, it covers motorized vessels only. So we had to estimate the percentage of motorized vessels that use our ramp versus non-motorized. We estimated right now at ninety-five percent, five percent non-motorized. So we're, we're hoping to get a ninety-five percent grant to cover what you all may envision for this parking lot, as well as the ramp down here, and maybe a possible kayak launch, or just to get people out of the line of traffic and off to the side while they unload, or load.
And this cost us nine thousand dollars?
Ninety-two hundred dollars, yes.
Good to me.
And we, I think we should probably be notified sometime in July if we would be awarded that grant.
Okay.
The last thing I wanted to talk about was the audit, the annual audit. Fieldwork has been completed, and the auditors do know that our report has to be presented, has to be complete by the end of May. Our bond covenant that we're still paying on requires us to deliver an audit report to the bondholder.
Sure.
Whether it's presented to council or not, the audit doesn't change. So it's just, you know, when, when the audit is presented, it's a matter of just reporting results. But there's really nothing for you to approve with that. So depending on the timing of us still getting data to the auditors, which, I finished my part. We're still waiting on one more piece. We should have something by the end of May, and you'll know your year-end results.
Sure.
That is all I have for right now.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
All good stuff. Good news.
Okay, Mandy, who's next?
Um, I, I just have a couple things, and then I'll turn it over in a minute. We, I, I talked with a couple of you recently about the evaluation process, and, um, and you've expressed some concerns with that, the way it's set up, the way it's formatted, the way it's designed, and feel like it's flawed and dysfunctional. So, um, I wanted to put that out there, that we're gonna start looking at, trying to do something different with that, or myself and the chief with... So, um, that, it just doesn't seem to be working for, for you guys. So we're gonna work on trying to put something else together for you to use when you have to evaluate personnel. We got an email today from Duke Energy that they're going to need us to execute an easement. I sent that to you, Andrew. Take a look at. I told him I doubt we can get it on this month because we're, we're, Andrew's leaving town prior Wednesday this week. So that we would probably be able to get that on our May agenda for you all to look at. So that has to do with the charging stations at Public Works. I guess, 'cause they've got to run some underground power on our property, so that we have to get an easement.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Matt has a few things, but, but, Matt, just let's take ADT off the table tonight. We were gonna talk about that, but I had a conversation with someone this afternoon. We're gonna take that off the table. So if you'll just address the benches, the truck, and the garage doors. Okay? Thank you.
I want to just bring up to your attention, we have some issues with our parks, safety issues. There are our picking tables. We have a total of thirteen picking tables throughout our city. I have, since two thousand and nineteen, every six months to a year, I have repaired these tables. Um, I just repaired this table that you see here at City Beach. The corner was sticking up. Each board's twenty dollars a board. That's five boards per table times thirteen tables a year. That's just the wood itself. This table here is at Ernie Mills Park right now. Every time it gets, the weather changes six months, it will droop like that, or it'll bow, and then it'll start splintering. Um, that one's splintering real bad, you can see right there on the seat. I have gone out to multiple companies for quotes on powder-coated benches, ADA-compliant benches. They range anywhere from eight hundred to a thousand dollars a piece. I could have them here, they said, between three to five weeks. We don't have to worry about replacing wood every year. We don't have to worry about painting them every year. The only thing we have to do is pressure wash them once a year, to keep the mold, the dirt, and everything off of them. I have a total of three at Ernie Mills Park. Uh, the first one's gonna be a round table that has an ADA-compliant ramp for wheelchairs to go to it. So you'll have three chairs, and then a wheelchair can go up to it. The other two tables, that table right there, that's one put of wheelchairs. The other two tables, just like that, but it has four seats on it, but the other two picking tables that are really bad now. I just need for you guys' permission, put it on consent agenda for me to proceed, proceed forward, and get rid of the dangers before the summer comes, and purchase these chairs. I did talk with Jan, and we found that there was still money left over from the one-twenty-five park. And we're looking about forty-five hundred, five grand for five tables, or four tables.
Four, I thought you said it was thirteen. I thought you said it was a total of thirteen.
Total in our city.
Yeah.
But for right now, the ones that need to be replaced before somebody gets hurt is the four tables.
Oh, okay. Okay, now I got you. I got you.
I would like to eventually...
I was gonna say replace them all.
Yeah.
I bought one of those tables. I wish I could give it to you. I bought one of those tables years ago, put it out on the river. It will not, it will never go away.
We have one right now at Ernie Mills Park.
And my wife hates it, so if we could figure out a way to give it to you, I would. But it looks like that right there, on the green. But no, absolutely, I got tired of doing something like mine, replacing the wood, replacing the wood, replacing the wood. Got one of those, you don't replace any, I got a bench that goes out there too.
We would replace in the wood, like the one I just did at City Beach. You know, you got twenty dollars for the, the one piece of, it's a two-by-ten, or two-by... Two-by-ten, uh, by ten feet, or two-by-six by ten feet. It's twenty bucks. Then you gotta replace the bolts.
Right.
Then you gotta stain it, stain. I look for a gallon of stain.
You're talking forty-five dollars? I was like, close to fifty bucks, right?
You know, so, and man, that was...
And once you put that thing out there, or like you said, pressure wash it, you know?
Yeah, I just, like I said, I got three estimates on it. And they range from forty-three hundred to fifty-two hundred, the highest. They are gonna go with the lowest company and get the, the board out of really, need to be changed ASAP.
Sure.
As long as you give me the permission to go ahead and do it.
They are indestructible. They have them at the high school.
Yeah.
I've seen them at fifteen-year period, I've seen kids two-hundred-and-fifty pounds stand on, jump up and down. You cannot damage them.
We do have one at Ernie Mills Park on the south side of the park. It's a round one, and it's been there since the park has been there.
So, I, I'm all for it. I mean, you cannot destroy these things, if, if they're like the one I bought. And, and that's about what I pay for. And, uh, yeah, the wood looks nice, but it's, you're repairing it every year. I'm, I'm all for it. Especially if we even got that money, or I was gonna say, we could take a shade shelter we don't have anymore, and pay for that.
That was discussed too.
Well, anyway, I think we can find the money to do four, and if you find you need more, just come back and do more. That would eliminate a lot of issues for you guys.
I just don't want nobody getting hurt.
No, absolutely, especially if they're got a bank suit down at the City Beach, you, you don't want them getting splintered.
Believe in Ernie Mills, every evening at Ernie Mills.
No, no, I get it. I get it, you know, okay, go ahead, next.
So let me, let me just make sure how, how we're gonna put this on the agenda. Your agenda is of all consent, and it's for four tables. And is there a maximum amount, dollar amount you want to set, Matt? You say, you think five thousand's enough?
The lowest is forty-three hundred, and the highest is fifty-two hundred.
Well, we say six thousand bucks, 'cause you gotta get them. And I, well, that's all, we approve, you spend six thousand. Put on consent agenda, go get them, and get them replaced.
Can I just ask real quick a thing when I was offhand? After the major beautification project done at Ernie Mills, how much we stopped from the one-twenty-five park money?
Oh, I'd have to look at my...
Okay.
Major beautification, which was with Duke Energy, there's probably about fourteen thousand dollars left.
Last, after the flowers, signs?
Yeah, I took about five thousand dollars off the top, that was Duke's brand name. But there are mixed numbers, a tree was taken down for eighteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars, there's a little bit of loss. But there, there's quite a little bit of...
I'm sorry, I was looking over the one-twenty-five park annual beautification, we're trying to do something else in the park, but he can get more ventures with the remainder of the money, it's park money anyway, and ordering ventures. It's just a thought, I don't want to prolong anything, but we may be able to replace more of those then.
Well, if you tell me to start man eventually, we'll go after the place. I would say let's go...
The four, four room, absolute, right now, meeting check.
He's looking at six thousand, and there's potentially fourteen there.
Well, that's really, I, I figured out thirteen thousand dollars, and you throw up in vengeance, you know? I mean, that's how I got there, and it's like to me, you know, do what you gotta do, but I'm for, let's just get rid of the problem.
I mean, I mean, take care of the ones that are really, so nobody gets hurt.
Yep.
Next thing I have on...
Hey, I put a tip, keep going, just from my understanding, is this the four getting replaced in Ernie Mills, or three in Ernie Mills and one at City Beach?
Three at Ernie Mills and one at City Beach.
Got you, got you. And Jan? Jan, is it a big deal to send us a breakdown of what we have left with, uh, the one-twenty-five funds?
Oh, no, not at all, but I don't have exact amounts, because bills have, I've only put the estimates.
Sure, that'll work.
I've been told we were spending, so, oh, yeah, I can send that to you.
The second thing I got, bring up is garage cars at Public Works. I've been here since two thousand and nineteen, and every year it seems like...
I've been here since two thousand nineteen and every year it seems like the doors get put off and I don't know why. I wasn't in the, in the position to ask why, I just dealt with them on a daily basis. The garage, the three garage doors that we use every day, they're, they're getting to the point where, like that first door on the, on the right hand side, when you push the door up, somebody has, somebody actually has to hold the door to make sure it don't come back down. And I don't want it to come down on a brand new truck or on a person.
Right.
And I don't want somebody there holding it with a stick.
No.
You can see around the edges, we get water come in, wind come in, every time we get rain. On the sides of each door, you'll have the locks. Got a picture of the locks, right there. The locks are not secure. The new garage doors today, they actually have pins that go from one side of the garage to the other side door. Well, that corrosion of the door hinges there. Also, these doors do not meet the hurricane wind speed. This door here, as you can see, we had a microburst or tornado that took down the billboard sign up too long ago. Right when that happened, this door bowed out like that from the winds and it don't close right, it don't open right. As you can see, the gap on the side there. I have gone out and got estimates for garage doors. I was gonna put it on the main agenda for tonight, but that company bailed out on us. And I'm like, well, why, why'd you bail out? You just gave me another estimate. They're like, well, we gave you estimates six months ago and we never heard back from you. Now you want us to come back and give you another estimate? We're not gonna play this game. Then, when talking with these other garage door companies, Marion County Garage Doors, they said that this quote that they gave me to replace them three doors, which is under budget and what's in there, they said that it's only valid for ten days. Because they, people getting estimates and waiting six months and then asking to come back, they're too busy to do it.
Right.
So I would like to start getting these doors replaced. There is twenty thousand dollars in the garage door area of, on the budget. Lowest cost right now, my first one is eighty, eight thousand dollars for all three doors. And that comes with a keypad and a remote for one of the doors. Where when, like during the night when I get called in, I don't have to sit there and fiddle with my keys. I just hit the door thing, my door goes up, I go out and I pull out, especially in storms. That's one of our, we're getting wet going in, but now we're dealing with keys and pitch black. And the highest, or the second one I got was ten thousand. And they all, one from Ocala, Florida, actually both of them are from Ocala, Florida. So there are lots of companies and I have another one coming tomorrow. I just wanted, once again, getting your permission if I could move on with this issue. It is a safety issue, it is a, it is a budget item, it's less than what we budgeted for, so I just need your blessing on it.
Yeah, I've personally been through the doors with Matt and they need replaced.
I don't, I'm like you, I've heard this garage door issue. If it's twenty thousand in the budgets and you're under that, you got my approval to do whatever you have to do. Because that is not safe.
Absolutely.
And y'all got it wrong? It's already in the budget?
Yes, sir.
You get it, and I can't wait somebody would pull a quote after ten days, but you know, I see what their point is. If you wait a year, I'm not gonna honor this, I get that. So get the quote, get somebody signed us and get the door replaced. I'm all for consent agenda mode.
They're also for it and they're predicting a wild and hairy hurricane season coming up, so ASAP.
Yep. My only comment, Matt, would be the difference between the two quotes, you know, and no preaching to the choir. Want to get the best, the long ones.
Yeah, well, they both meet the standard of hurricane hundred and fifty mile an hour wind gust.
Okay.
They don't install garage doors today that don't meet that spec.
Okay, right, gotcha.
Like these doors here, you can, you can basically push on them and you should see the second door.
You show.
These garage doors have been here probably since the building was here. So, and like I said, every time it rains out, or you know, you can see the daylight and that was at noon time, you know? And at night, you can see the streetlights outside, it's not a.
That's not, that's not insecure.
And like I said, it was just kind of concerning, like, why give me estimates? And I'm like, well, because we give you estimates after estimates that, you know, you need answers within thirty days or what, you know?
Yeah, I would say you get it, get their quotes, you get it done, if it's under twenty thousand dollars, do it. I'm for it. And like, you know, makes, it sounds like you got good quality doors, so just do it. Okay, next?
Truck twenty, it's a two thousand five fifteen hundred. It has over a hundred and thirty thousand miles on its vehicle. In the last six months, we have spent eighteen hundred dollars in repairs on this truck. Saturday, when I came into work, or no, Friday when I came into work to open and, open up the facilities and clean the facilities, the truck broke down and it left me stranded. Thank God it was at Ernie Mills Park, but I had to walk all the way back to the shop. Get another truck for it. Truck had broke down and he'd go do what he had to do. My personal opinion is, we've already spent eighteen hundred dollars on this truck. It's a two thousand five with a hundred, over a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. And the truck broke down again, it's dead in my parking lot. And when I talk to the people that repaired the truck, it's electrical problems, computer problems, it's gonna have transmission problems, the trucking needs to be replaced. I have gone out and been getting quotes on trucks. The prices of vehicles have gone up since COVID nineteen. I talked to a truck, one company today, Tropical Ford, where I came to a meeting and they could get me in a single cab, two-wheel drive, long bed pickup truck, two fifty, for thirty-seven thousand. We do have money in the budget on the capital for vehicles. I'm still gonna get more quotes, I have personal quotes, not just on the what computer says. Because I got quotes for vehicles and you're talking forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars. But when you talk to them and explain that you work for the city of Dunellen or any other cities, you get government rates. Like this truck for Tropical Ford, it was like forty-six thousand dollars. And he'll give it to the city because we're a city, for thirty-seven thousand.
And is that because it's on state contract?
Yeah.
The state contract, so we don't have to go out and bid for that? Because if we can get it through state contract that the dealer has, then we don't have to go out and bid for that.
Right.
I'm gonna bring that up to you again, I'm gonna do more research on this and get, but we are gonna have to stop repairing trucks. So I mean, I have two trucks that are two thousand models, put a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them and them trucks are, they're actually dry rotting. I'm not asking to buy all brand new trucks, but maybe one this year or two this year or one maybe next year to finish the fleet up.
Right.
I just hate knowing that if it was one of my new guys, they broke down, I'd have felt real bad. Me, I, I, I'd run my trucks to the ground and I'm used to walking home, so. I just like to have me, not one of my new guys.
Right. Did you say that we've already got money in the budget for this?
There's twenty, there's twenty-eight thousand in your thunder gear?
No, not at all, Grant.
There's twenty-eight thousand in twenty-three budget for, to replace a work truck, but there's also eighty-five thousand in there to replace the Ford dump truck. And I've gone through that, we don't see replacing a dump truck. So between the two line items, there is enough money to cover the thirty-seven K.
And there's eight thousand in there, other than that, outline them for a grinder or something?
And then a cleaner?
Oh, right, pre-cleaner, right, so, yeah. There's a, there's money in the.
I like said, I just, I'd like to get a new truck this year and then next year I'll put in for another one, just.
Right.
So I can, this old truck that don't cost the city more money.
And when we went through the vehicles the other week, twenty was the bad actor. It was the one that we knew was gonna get some trouble first. Gotcha, okay, gotcha, so.
And truck eleven, twelve.
Right, I know, you're over there.
Right, we went through all of his inventory to see what was what, so we could get an idea of what we're gonna have to do in the future.
Okay.
We knew that this twenty had one foot in the grave and the other on a banana peel, so.
Okay, good. I'm for, let's get it replaced, especially if it's breaking down and you drive away.
Well, I felt, I felt the truck twenty, one that did break down, it lasted me another year or two. But, and truck eleven, twelve, which are two thousand models, they're the ones that are dry rotting. I was hoping I could replace one of them, but it cost my life, my pension, it broke down.
Right, okay.
But I'll get you in, in next Wednesday, I'll get you more, didn't notice that I could get.
How, how long is it gonna take? I know one time we bought a truck, it took like six months to get it delivered. Is that what we're looking?
They, Tropical Ford says I could, I could have a truck next week if I wanted to.
Wow.
But they said they, you don't jump on it, you're gonna, you're gone.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that, y'all good, go ahead.
But I'll get you one on the next day, please.
Yeah.
So we wanna put that on the regular agenda since you really don't have the quotes.
Probably, yeah, and that way you can bring us the final, whatever your quotes are and let's get her done.
Thank you very much, that's all of that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Last but not least.
That it?
Can you put that picture up? That sent you.
Oh, you sent it on my phone, I don't have it in my email.
I sent Mandy a picture of what we did over the weekend on the river.
Uh, you were busy if you were on the river.
And we're busy.
I was gonna say, I.
Then we're busy.
In my yard.
We collected, we collected enough near us to start our own jiffy school.
I don't doubt it. That pleasure was slam, those airbrushers.
So.
Can we all share that stuff?
Just like a party?
No, we destroyed.
I was gonna say, I'm joking. I'm just joking with you.
We had pictures of the destroyed beer.
Wow. I know I got stopped the day in the gym, they said, you going out for the cleanup on the river? I said, absolutely, I gotta get me some old beer. You know, it's funny, when I go down the river swimming and I got my goggle on, I'm just swimming down the river with my paddleboard. I mean, you go along, you pick up sunglasses, whatever, so you come and pour it. Then there are half a case of beer, realize, by that time they come around a curve and they seen you guys and they just start jumping.
Look, you see the bags? See how large? That was just this weekend and the river is getting very crowded really fast. Law Brad was here tonight, he was sitting back here and he does a wonderful, wonderful job on that river.
Mm-hmm, wow.
But we, and what the good thing is, well, it's not a good thing, but it's ever, it's not just one particular beer. It's, we could, we make Nick over here look bad with our variety that we get.
You got them all cooked.
Doesn't fall under forfeiture?
No, it wouldn't. So anyway, had a good weekend on the river and we have written a lot of parking tickets here in the last few days of the month.
It's gonna get.
And it's gonna get it, yes. All we got.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is that all the reports?
That's it.
Okay. Jan, do you have any council comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Getting in?
No, I continue to be here once a month. And I'm gonna go to the CRA class on the fourteenth to learn a little bit more about that in Orlando. It's really, truly worth it.
Okay, you are, you are signed up and you're going?
Yes, Mandy signed me up and I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you. That's great.
Can we just backtrack a minute? Can we pick a date for the workshop discussion of transition, please, department?
Yeah, we, we need to do that. I don't, while we're all here, has anybody got a problem the last half a month? Right now, I don't, I don't think. Let's see. Remember your tax returns are due on the eighteenth of April. Just.
I have commitments April twentieth?
Or you're gonna extend until October like I. Okay. Anybody have a problem with, like I said, the last two full weeks?
I have commitments on the twentieth and the twenty-fifth.
Twenty, that's better for me. Actually, the twenty-fifth doesn't matter for me either. Oh, the twenty-fifth is out, okay. What was the twenty-first, was the other one you said?
No, no, the twentieth is the other one.
The twentieth, okay, all right.
The day of the lead is that Thursday, the twentieth, Thursday, the twentieth is out.
That doesn't work in the twenty-fifth, all right, twenty-fifth definitely not, twentieth is out, okay. What about the rest of the days? Anybody got a problem with any of the rest of the days? Okay. We normally do workshops on Monday or Wednesday, right?
Yeah, so you, so you have your council meeting on Wednesday next week, which is the twelve. The following week, your Monday's the seventeenth, your Wednesday's the nineteenth. And you would have, the eighteenth wouldn't work because unless you were gonna do it during the day because you have planning commission on the eighteenth. And then you have the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth of the next week are your Mondays and Wednesdays.
Well, does the nineteenth of the twenty-sixth, does that work with everyone? Okay, that work?
It's gonna be a date time, once again?
Uh, the nineteenth, these are both Wednesdays, the nineteenth.
Wednesday, the nineteenth.
And Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Do you wanna do two?
No, no, I'm just saying, well, those days are. No, I'm just saying, if they work for everybody, I'd say let's do it on the nineteenth.
Let's go on the nineteenth, what time? Make it earlier than five.
How late, how late do you need to have it?
Thirty?
Four thirty? You sure?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Excellent.
Four thirty on the nineteenth. Okay, workshop. Okay. Blue, four thirty. A little late, we'll just start with that.
You said four thirty, right?
Four thirty, got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody, we got that. Okay. What else do you? I'd like to just communicate to everybody, the rains are getting ready to come here probably within another month. When that happens, mowing season will be in full blown and we have two people mowing, it's all, Matt, right now. He does it when he's got time, but his time is very limited. So anything that anybody needs from Public Works is gonna be limited once the rains start hitting. Just want everybody to keep that in mind before everybody starts getting mad up with need this, need that, need this. Be patient and get ahold of one of us if, rather than get upset with Matt.
Wednesday, we're gonna start.
I know. Everything's burning up around my house. I know, Giselle's week is all burning up. But that's okay, that's all.
And we do have one vacancy in Public Works right now, a full-time position that we're trying to fill and we have to pass for that, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's a milestone.
Jan, you're done, you're done, you're done, okay. I had a couple things. One, short-term rentals. I do wanna remind everybody, as soon as we fill that seat right there, probably in May, we will get back on short-term rentals and start having discussions about that and we'll have a special workshop for that. So don't give up on us, we just need to get a full council here before we get into all that, that stuff. Evaluation form, I totally agree with you. I didn't like the one we just filled out, there's gotta be a better one. I know I'm still looking for one now, anyway. I think if any of us know where there's an evaluation form, it makes sense. Yeah, I have, but I just haven't sent it out yet. Just a form of a process to, there needs to be upfront communication mid-year and end of the year. Right, so. That's kinda what I was telling her, where I work, we always have, you know, you did your valuation.
That's kinda what I was telling her, where I work, we always have, you know, you did your valuation. Well, actually, the companies I worked for, you, you prepared your own evaluation. And then your supervisor ranked that evaluation, then you set goals for next year and then those goals were evaluated as part of your evaluation that followed. So we need to get something like that. I think that's just fair to everybody to kind of make sure everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing, okay? I wanna talk about something. First off, Jan, at the last month's meeting, you made a comment about somebody on the county commission and them being against some stuff that was going on in Chapman Park. And you said that was an article in Star Banner, did you ever find it out?
I looked in search and search, could not find it again.
Well, I looked too and I couldn't find it. I kept, cause when you said it, I was very surprised, uh, and I, cause I get Star Banner, that, and I couldn't find it either and I went back and looked.
I went into the archives and couldn't find it.
Okay, so, you never found that, cause, um, the, making comments as members of this council, I think we have to be very careful that we got all the facts right and if there's something that's stated, I think we need to be,
I only brought it up because it was in print, like I said, I even copied quotes and put on my desk and didn't even find that.
Okay. Alright, well, we, we as council just need to be very careful whenever we're speaking that, you know, again, I'm gonna say some things and put both feet in my mouth at the same time, but when we talk about other people in the county that control a lot of us, I think we just need to be very careful. So, please, kinda do that in the future. I had something else. Okay, I didn't write it down, so I'm, I'm done. Okay, city attorney?
Yes, sir, I do not have, uh, anything specific to report this evening. The governor has signed some bills, so there are still a number of bills making their way through the legislature and, uh, some of the ones I know the city is really watching or of, are of interest are still in committee. So, uh, just wanna let you know that there are a few land use ones, I think that, uh, I'll brief you on later, that have been signed, but, uh, the majority of the session, and certainly anything we brought up, uh, you know, here is still going through the session. You mentioned earlier, I am going out of town, I will be, uh, overseas starting on Wednesday until, Wednesday evening until the 14th, I'll be returning. And of course, in my absence, um, Patrick and the rest of my firm are completely at council's disposal. He will be here, uh, on Monday, I'm trying to get, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Still, I mean, on schedule.
You had it earlier today.
He'll be here on Wednesday and of course he'll be the go-to point to coordinate, you know, whatever, whatever my absence and of course I have to be able to check and mail and so forth. Like, well, that far out of the scope of things. So, that's all I have.
Okay, I remembered what I was gonna ask the chief. Okay. The governor did sign, no longer is required to have a permit to carry concealed weapons. Now, I have a concealed carry permit, I've always had. The question that I really have to you, chief, you're, you're the policeman and know all this kinda stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I've always had concealed carry. I don't carry, um, unless I'm really traveling and I know, usually when I'm hunting, I may, I may travel with this. But does this change anything about businesses that's no longer having, you need a permit to get a concealed carry? You can just get one, that seems a little dangerous to me, but anyway, that's just me. But, I mean, the businesses, are they gonna start allowing people to carry guns in store like Publix and stuff like that?
I can answer some of those questions.
Okay, and, and every, every, every business is probably gonna be different.
Every business will be different. Concealed weapons, any, first of all, any business can carry, employees can carry concealed firearms. I mean, they can open carry business. That's the reason why you go into a pawn shop, you see all of them with the guns on their side. In your house, in your business, you can open carry. This bill has nothing to do with open carry, you still gotta be concealed. But if you want to, but you still gotta get like a, a class. You just can't automatically start carrying. And if you don't go through the classes, the way it's been presented to us, if you don't get a license, then you can't go through the, you gotta go through the three-day period. But if you get a concealed weapons permit, you can, I don't understand this, you can walk out with a gun. Even as a policeman, I cannot go and buy a gun and walk out with it.
Buy a pistol, you can, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I know.
But, but with my concealed weapons permit,
You can.
Uh, I've been a policeman now almost 50 years, so I can't go buy a damn gun. Pardon my French. But if I got a concealed weapons and shot one bullet in a barrel, I can walk out with a gun.
Right.
But it's, uh, uh, this is a prelude to open carry, I can tell you.
Well, that's, I wasn't gonna get into that, but, no, it just seemed confusing when it was getting passed. There seemed to be a lot of people on both sides arguing, both sides of this thing. And when it passed and then the governor did sign it, again, I've always had concealed carry and that was the reason when I went to a gun store to buy a pistol, I could walk out with it with that concealed carry permit. Without it, I had to wait three to five days. So, again, but I also thought I understood it right. It's really gonna be a location, location like the city of Dunellen, this city hall. I can feel it's here and I can't carry here. No, and that's what I,
It's still the same thing, airports, police stations, voting, uh, voting booths, any government function, uh, uh, of course stadiums, airports.
Okay.
Don't think I have missed, yeah, uh, a school, well, schools are weird. Okay, let me get into the schools. You cannot carry concealed firearms inside a school. However, if you're picking up your chopper and you go through the line, you can have concealed weapons, okay? In the car.
On campus.
On campus, but you gotta be in the pickup line. Okay, but now then, the, so, you're a guy, you got a concealed weapons. Okay, or if your female got it in your pocketbook.
Right.
But the teacher says, hold on a minute, the principal needs to see you about Little Johnny.
Oh, no.
That changes everything. You cannot get out of the car with a concealed weapon and go in and see the principal. But you can go through the line to pick up your child, which makes sense.
Yeah, I get it.
It does make sense, but if the principal needs to see you, better keep that gun in the car.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, well, I, I just saw it got passed and I was confused, cause again, this thing's been going back and forth about what all this is gonna allow.
It, it is, it's gonna be a little confusing until everything comes out in print, you know. But I, I can assure you, one day Florida will be like Texas and Florida and some of the other states, it'll be open carry.
Right. Yeah, okay, I'm good, thank you, thank you, chief. Okay. Is there any, oh, public comments, oh, I guess I did. Anybody, no, no, we, the last thing on the agenda is public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? There's Mr. David.
Dave, order 11835, East Blue Cove Drive in Dunellen. So, so I wanna compliment the police staff for patrolling the river and the photos of what was collected on the river over the weekend. I'll take you back a few years ago, we had two people drowned in the river. And, uh, as a resident on the river, so I see the increase in the result, which is like drunkenness coming down the river again. And so, I doubt seriously that's residents living on the river that's dragging all that stuff down. So it comes from commercial vendors that's taking people to KP Hall and KP Hall allowing that on the river. And I think that the city of Dunellen should communicate directly to those vendors at a KP Hall and say it's not acceptable and the residents that live on the river, it's not acceptable. And so, we don't continue with just getting and receiving what's put in on the river, upriver. Thank you.
David, I totally agree, I, I do think a lot of that's, a lot of that is not the residents that live on the river. It's, it's clearly people coming here, brought one way or another on this river and bringing it with them. And somehow allowing to get it in a kayak, to get it in a tube and then start down the river. It's just, we gotta figure out how to stop this somehow.
I'd like to answer that, there's a, um, a sign at our boat ramp out here and it is so beat up, you can't read it. We need a brand-new big sign, no alcoholic beverages, no can, um, no disposables on the river. You can't even read the sign, that's how bad it's been up, so.
Is that the one at City Beach, right there?
No, I'm talking about right here at Boat Launch.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. I, I imagine a lot of that is coming in right there to also.
Got it. Okay. Alright.
Okay, just go down and take a look.
Matt? Put that on your list. Get you a sign, alright, anybody else?
I don't have anybody signed up.
Anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
Well, we're gonna have to. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So, move, have a second?
I would love to second it.
Okay, all in favor? Aight.